Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 24th, 2007. We are meeting in City Hall chambers, Room 340, John Farrow Council Chambers in City Hall downtown, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month, in which we meet down at Van Nuys City Hall, in our efforts to bring City Council meetings closer to all Angelinos. We are broadcast live each meeting on Channel 35 through the city's cable system, and we have rebroadcast in the evening. And we invite members of the public to come down and to give public testimony on items that are on our agenda for a public hearing. Every item that we vote on in City Council, we either have a public hearing in committee or in the City Council full meeting. And we also invite folks to speak in general public comment, which is available for items that are under our jurisdiction but are not on our agenda. Agendas are available to the public through our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where there is a wealth of information about your elected officials, your city departments, and city services to improve your life. You also can catch live streaming video webcasts of our council meetings at that homepage as well. Finally, you can call through the city's council phone service, which is an audio service, to listen to the committee meetings and the council meetings, and that is available at (213) 621-CITY. I want to thank council members Grul, Weezer, Reyes, Wesson, and Zine for being here on time. We have now six members, and we are waiting four more, or two-thirds of our membership to begin the meeting with a full quorum. I'd like to ask Councilmember Cardenas to join us, Councilwoman Hahn to join us, Councilmember Labange to join us, Councilmember Parks to join us, Councilmember Smith to join us, Councilmember Weiss to join us as soon as possible. Councilmember Rosendahl and Councilmember Perry are both excused on city business to arrive a little bit later in the meeting. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin a quorum. And again, Councilmembers Cardenas, Hahn, Parks, Smith, and Weiss, if you will please join us. Thank you. While we're awaiting, we want to thank Councilmembers Grul, Weezer, Parks, Perry, Smith, Wesson, and Zine for being here. We now have eight members. While we are waiting the quorum, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Jose Weezer to give a presentation and some critical information, if I can ask everybody to please draw their attention to him. And want to welcome the guest that Mr. Weezer has invited to be here as well. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. President, for giving us some time and some flexibility in today's agenda to make a very special and important presentation. Today, I'm here to announce that I am presenting a motion to renew a $50,000 reward that we put out a few months ago for any information leading to the arrest of the individual or individuals who are responsible for the death of a beautiful 14-year-old girl, Emery Munoz. Emery Munoz's body was found exactly one year ago today in an area in Boyle Heights, near abandoned warehouses, close to the intersections of Olympic and Indiana. We have reason to believe, or the LAPD has told us, that the death of Emery Munoz may have been related to rave parties or flyer parties that draw upon young people. To many of these parties are often held in isolated secluded areas. Based upon information provided to the LAPD, it may have also been possible that Emery Munoz's death may have been related to information obtained on myspace.com. Sir, we are here today to announce the renewal of the motion to provide a $50,000 reward leading to the arrest of these individuals responsible. The family is seeking answers. The family is seeking justice. But the family also has reiterated many times in our conversations that they do not want this to happen to any young person again. And that's why today I'm also introducing a motion that would help us to prevent these types of unnecessary deaths from occurring again. The motion calls upon the LAPD to identify ways that the city can raise awareness among parents and young adults about the dangers of flyer parties and rave parties, and what precautions might be put into effect to urge youth against attending these parties. But also, we want someone to be held accountable. It also directs the Los Angeles Police Department to report on additional penalties the city can adopt to ensure that the promoters of these parties and the owners and proprietors are held accountable for illegal flyer parties held on their premises. We want our officers not to simply go and stop these parties, but to investigate and find out who are the owners that are allowing these types of parties to happen. Oftentimes, these parties are held in isolated areas with very little adult supervision, where environment is created for crime to occur. We are here today to hopefully stop those types of crimes from occurring at these parties. And now, I'd like to introduce to you the aunt of Emery Munoz, who was instrumental in raising awareness of Emery Munoz's death and the need to find more answers and the need to address these types of parties. Becky Harrow. Becky?
Good morning. My name is Becky, Emery's aunt, and in her memory, her mother and some of family members are here asking you, begging you for justice. We need you to know last year was the worst and most painful for the whole family, followed by frustration and anger. All of us have our legal rights to protect us, but it seems that the criminals, these murderers, are unduly sheltered by the very laws that are designed to protect you and me. The laws are there to protect us from terrible, horrible acts of those who just don't care, who don't have feelings or morals. And unfortunately, many of these murderers are underage and barely teenagers. Through manipulation of the laws, they literally get away with murder. No matter how hard our police department tries to bring them to justice, it's not possible because of the laws. Murder, it's murder, no matter what age of the criminals, and they all need to be brought to pay for their actions. Our Emery should be here. She was a beautiful young girl who trusted everyone, and she believed that everybody deserved a chance. I wish I had time to tell you about what a wonderful girl she was. Beautiful smile and a beautiful personality, who had big dreams and goals. She should be here. We should be able to put our arms around her and see her lovely smile, but that can't be. She will always live in our hearts. Please help us bring her justice. Our laws need to change. Too late for Emery, but not too late for many of your kids, and it could be your own kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues, and anybody we're asking as Channel 35 will air this, anybody who does have information, please, you can call (323) (526) 3000. Detective Briceato from the Hollenbach Division is handling this case. And again, as was mentioned, it could be any child. You know, the young people who go to these parties are not necessarily bad kids. It's any one of our kids who go to these parent parties who are lured by the excitement of fun and enjoyment, but we have to put everyone on notice that these parties may and can be dangerous, and the city should be doing more to stop these. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the family for being here, and to the LAPD for their continued work on the case. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinals Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum is presented.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, they will be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Grul seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be unanimously approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back to public comment.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there have been several requests to continue a number of items. There's a request to continue items 25 and 26 for one week to January 31st.
Okay. So any objection, colleagues, to continuing those items? If not, so ordered. Next items?
There's a request to continue item 28 to February 21st.
Okay, colleagues, any objection to continuing item number 28 till the 21st of February? If not, let's go ahead and do that. Next items?
And there is a request to continue item 34 to Friday, this Friday, January 26th.
There's no objection, colleagues, to continuing 34 till Friday, January 26th? If not, we will continue that until then as well. Next items?
On the regular agenda, item one is a zoning appeal notice for public hearing, and the applicant requests a continuance to February 21st.
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to continuing that? If not, we will consent to that. Next items?
Items 2 through 32, with the exception of the items that were continued, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Let's hold 2 through 10 on the desk and see if we get 12 members for the ordinances. Any specials, colleagues, 11 through 32? Mr. Rosendahl?
25 and 26.
Those were both continued till the 31st?
25.
Okay, we have 2 through 10 already called special, and 25 and 26, we continued till the 31st. We had a request to continue those. Is that different?
That works.
Okay. All right. Are there specials, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
13 special. Could you give me the date again that we continued 34?
34 was continued till Friday.
Friday?
Yeah. And we do have 12 members, so we'll call five special for Mr. Rosendahl, and the rest of the ordinances we can take up. Any other specials? If not, please open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 33 through 36, with the exception of item 34, are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have a card on 35, call special from the public, and we'll open and close the other public hearings. Colleagues, anybody wishing to call this special? Mr. Parks?
Use myself on 36.
Okay, we'll call that special for that recusal. Mr. Smith? 36, all right. Mr. Smith, call special. That leaves us with item 33. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
Items 37 through 39 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, have we had public hearings on those?
Public hearings were held in the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, we'll hold those on desk for closed session. All right, if we can go back to item 5, I believe, right? The first one? Oh, yeah, let's just take public comment, excuse me. We'll start out in Van Nuys with Zuma Dogg, and then we'll come back to City Hall to Dave Thompson.
Hey, what's up? First of all, City Council, Eric, I'd just like to say that First Amendment protections, medium of expression goes beyond the printed word and verbal to physical movement. You prevented me from dancing like Justin Timberlake. You told me I didn't have dignity. I got much more important things, but this is an issue. I'll be calling your office about it. I'll try not to dance today. Let's talk about the $50 million gang money thing that is going to be put to a vote. Janice Hahn says that we cannot arrest her way out of this, and I agree. People will say, Doug McIntyre will be talking about this tomorrow on KABC, the $50 million that will be passed on to voters and made to vote on. Well, gee, if Connie Rice said that $80 million is already being wasted with the gang intervention units, then why are we spending another $50 million? Well, thank you very much, Eric, from Janice Hahn's office, for clarifying. Connie Rice didn't say 100% of the $80 million was being wasted. She's just saying it's being wasted regarding LA bridges that started off as a small program, as a temporary Band-Aid, and so it needs to be totally regurgitated in a new program in the spirit of helping out middle school people, needs to be reinstated. Also, I better write down, I was writing down these notes, thank you so much, Eric, from Janice Hahn's office. There's a three-step program, and the first thing is that we need the gang alternative program. That's in the harbor area. The $50 million part of it will be going for the gang alternative program, specifically in the harbor gateway area. They need it. Also, the money for LA's best after-schools program for LAUSD, very important, and gang outreach. So we need to find out how the money's being spent. There definitely needs to be more accountability and just a more collaborative effort. People will say, well, gee, why don't we just give the $50 million to the cops? Well, you know what? We can't arrest a way out of this, and if you put the money into this, if it's being spent efficiently, you will be treating the symptom instead of treating the disease afterwards. And so that's what it's all about. And don't bust medical marijuana dispensaries. If you want a list of proper grocers, you can go to ganjagrocer.com for Prop 215 approved medical marijuana dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. Dave Thompson is next, and after that will be Oscar Johnson. Welcome, sir.
I'm Dave Thompson, and also known as Sky Anderson, because I have a TV show that plays in the LA and Hollywood, 11 o'clock Thursday night. First, I want to thank the City Council for unanimously approving putting on the ballot to raise money to fight gangs, particularly Janice Hahn. Her father, Mayor Hahn, did a lot. His public safety was his whole issue. My whole position is that a child's life is a terrible thing to waste, and it costs $92,000 to keep a child in state juvenile hall, and that money could be better spent preventing kids from getting in juvenile hall. Gang activity involves around drug sales. This is a letter I wrote about Mayor Hahn's issue. A 10-year-old boy was killed by a Los Angeles gang member because his older brother did not pay a drug debt. The lady who did the report said that we needed a Marshall Plan to stop gangs, said that we need to have job opportunities for these young people, and we need to have ways to get them off drugs. You told me, we can get you off drugs if you want to get off drugs. I know your City Council makes $100,000 a year. I'm asking parents who have kids on drugs, who have had kids who want to be protected, I don't care if you have an SUV, if you bring them Brentwood, to come down here and tell the City Council you want action. And it needs publicity, publicity of what it's going to cost the people if they don't do something about it. I'm asking City Council, as I asked last time I was here, to do a study on what drug addictions is costing the people in terms of money, suffering, and death, particularly what it's costing our children. Again, a child's life is a terrible thing to waste, and you could do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Oscar Johnson is next. After that will be Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, sir. My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm an actress for the home in Los Angeles, and we are getting very, very slow response from the Los Angeles Police Department. Seems as though we still have a stigma and a prey with the police and being a person of color with our laws that designed to protect us, seem like they're using that against us. And it seems as though there's a lot of misrepresentation as being a police department, as being a police officer. We seem that though that the Los Angeles Police Department don't have any authority over them, they do what they want to do on Skid Row, involving the homeless and the peoples of color, and with the MTA, we don't get a response from the mayor department where the MTA is ran, and where the infraction that goes on on the MTA buses that never get reported, and the misidentification of imposters, seem as though they're working with the Los Angeles Police Department and the MTA buses. And I think we should have more dignity in what we're doing and what we should be about as citizens and being an authority over people that we have authority over. And I've said it many more times, you only see the Los Angeles Police Department on Skid Row, and they're neglecting the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Eric Garcetti. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. As we have begun to cut personnel, workers, cutting the district workers of each council member of 15 different districts, these positions must be cut down to merely eight districts of the City Hall council members. Because of the lack of funds, work that is not needed to be done with the city workers, lack of fund trustees, bank accounts, this is a job well done by the public people in a crisis of shortage of funds. At least seven of these districts is not out of order, and do not need any assistance, any agenda, money, or document paper to begin buildings, homes, houses, buildings, churches, or anything new in the ending of Iraq war and the beginning of Hawkeye Eight in the 58 states. Again, as we begin to cut personnel departments, we must remember that as we cut districts, that most of these districts is well taken care of. There is no need for them to put their business on the agenda of unnecessary documents or building in time of a war. I am very thankful to say that the district that needs the most help is the city district of Los Angeles, not the counties. It is very clean, trash business is very great, transportation is very great in different council, either you can say different district. So we need to work on Los Angeles. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cassetti. I want to first clarify something I said yesterday about fifty-two states. We all know the fifty on the flag, but Cuba is going to be the next state. It's coming very soon. And you know what fifty-two is? It's the state of denial. See, I need more time to get into this stuff. The mayor and the city council live in that state a lot of the time. AB thirteen eighty-one, he's in a state of denial over that, even when he looks in the mirror, I think. Hair color, he's, it's a fake. It's fake. We're in a state of denial here over firearms in this city, in this state, and in this country. Drive-by shootings. You know, you don't hear of drive-by stabbings. You know, it's the guns. Let's look at the gun. You know, there's over six hundred licenses, federal licenses, in this county, and over thirty of those are to produce firearms. And people don't kill people. It is guns that kill people. You know, because if you took that away from them, it's a lot harder to kill someone when you're not driving by, you know, with no risk of getting apprehended. That's why we have all these fugitives. Let's get Bratton in here and tell us about the fugitive numbers. We're in a state of denial over the homeless. We see them here all the time. You guys are all turning over dirt at the police station, looking silly, and all these homeless advocates are out there telling you. We're in a state of denial over Iraq. The city attorney's in a state of denial over the First Amendment, Venice Beach. We already run rings around you over that. You even got Zuma Dogg. You're in a state of denial. He's out, he's out in the doghouse at Van Nuys because he doesn't want to be intimidated by the watchdog police.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Susan Rauten is our next speaker. Sorry. Susan Rauten, please.
Good morning.
Welcome.
I'm here to let everyone know that the City Council's yes vote on Friday, January twelfth, two thousand and seven, for Butterfield Games to operate the Sherman Oaks Castle Park Arcade was not in the best interest of the city or its citizens. Amusement Enterprises submitted a proposal with a higher revenue return to the city and was unanimously ranked first in the General Managers' Award summary under the category of proven performance and quality of current comparable operations. Amusement Enterprises proposed capital improvements, but Butterfield Games did not. Yet, at the Department of Rec and Parks meeting, Linda Barth misrepresented Amusement Enterprises' revenue to the city by over half a million dollars. It's on tape. The proposed revenue to the city was clearly misrepresented in Amusement Enterprises' proforma as required by the RFP. The RFP was deviated from to manipulate the outcome to ensure Amusement Enterprises would not be awarded the concession. The misrepresentations and discrepancies were brought to the attention of Rec and Parks and City Council on August ninth, two thousand and six, and again on September fifth, with many other calls and faxes to city staff, including January eleventh. Yet, these issues were not addressed by anyone, including Liz Diaz, the Rec and Parks liaison to the mayor, who I called several times. The Office of the City Attorney also received documentation prior to last Friday's meeting and vote. The issues that were raised were repeatedly ignored. Only Councilmember Cardenas was interested in investigating this process, but could not garner the support of his colleagues. The entire process has been a farce. The outcome was predetermined less than three working days prior to the public hearing, and I could not see the other proposals, only the one that was awarded. I want to know why no one was interested in looking into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments, ma'am. That closes our public comment, general public comment for today. If we can return to the agenda, please.
Item five was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Oh, Mr. Reyes? Item five?
Thank you, council colleagues. This is an item in which we would want to provide an amendment. I believe it's being circulated. It's to allow for a report back to get an understanding of the impact and the status of this particular ordinance. It allows us to, to work with the notion of, of how we recycle our buildings and allowing for this type of activity to function. Mr. Duennas, can you just give us a quick overview of the ordinance and what we're supposed to do?
Okay, for item five, good evening, or good morning, Councilmembers. Robert Duennas, City of L.A. Planning Department. The ordinance before you is, came about through the department because of the proliferation of ICOs to prohibit automotive uses from locating in certain areas. Rather than approaching it from a piecemeal fashion, the department took a citywide approach. After workshops and working with the council offices and the community groups, it was determined that many auto businesses were impacting these areas through the way they work, basically outdoor storage, outdoor spray painting, and other activities that could impact a single-family home or business adjacent to it. What this ordinance would allow is it establishes a set of development standards that the physical building would have to adhere to and operational standards in which the operator would have to operate under.
Please hold my time. Oh, excuse me. Please hold my time. Thank you.
The development standards would basically address, like, location of windows, bay doors, and the physical appearance of a building, so it does not impact a commercial pedestrian area or a single-family neighborhood. The operational standards establishes how they can operate, hours of operation, loading, unloading. The site must be maintained in good appearance. Basically, we're trying to minimize their impact on the adjacent uses, and that's for new businesses coming in. As it was discussed, what about the existing buildings for reuse? The existing buildings would not have to adhere to the development standards because the physical structure is there, but they would have to adhere to the operational standards. That way, their hours of operation could be managed, how they load and unload, where they can store their vehicles could all be addressed. And again, those are laid out in the new structure of the ordinance. If those operational standards and development standards could not be met, the development then would be turned over as a conditional use permit to the zoning administrator, who would conduct a public hearing, at which time the council offices, the neighborhood groups, and concerned citizens could participate in the review of the project. Hopefully, then, they can tailor specific conditions to that business in that community and address any other concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Duennas. Colleagues, you should know that this item was in committee for several months. We have report backs from the planning department, from the city attorney's office, Customer Parks office, as well as, I believe, Customer Perry's did voice some concern as to how these buildings were being retrofitted for auto use. Now, because of the nature of our neighborhoods and that we did not have the opportunity to create buffer zones between older buildings who are now used for this use, you literally have residential units right up against these structures. You have situations where you have the fumes from the paint, you have the noise of the actual bodywork, the storage of cars, of cars that have been wrecked, such as sitting idle on lots that are going to be fixed, that can be perceived as eyesores for residential areas. The quest here was to find a way to look at these older buildings, who admittedly will create jobs, will have landscaping, will have improvements, but have these physical shortcomings, if you will, because they are up against residential units. So, this has been the tension that we've been dealing with. I know Customer Parks has been very adamant about certain standards in order for us not to impose on residential areas. And this is a balancing point between how we improve older buildings, create jobs while respecting the needs of the neighbor and the residential communities that are up against these structures without the benefit of a buffer, whether it be an alley or another sidewalk. The luxury doesn't exist in the older neighborhoods. So, this tends to be the tension. I understand there's an amendment, and again, I think we should have this discussion and vote it one way or the other. But it's been through committee for several months. I think we send Mr. Duennas back to the drawing board. About how many times, do you think?
More than I can count.
More than he can count. So, we've been trying to craft language that can work, and again, we should have a healthy discussion on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Duennas.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith is our next speaker, and then Mr. Parks.
If I may defer to Mr. Parks, I'm circulating an amendment.
You got it. Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Signing the amendment. Got it. Please.
Did I get the full three minutes now?
You get the full three minutes. I'll give you fifteen seconds extra.
Now, I want to, first of all, thank the members of the Eighth District community. This is an issue that I heard more about when I ran for office in two thousand and three. And then, to come in the council in early two thousand and four, create a motion for ICO, primarily, we were looking for the Eighth District in the South Los Angeles area, and then moved beyond that for citywide. And I want to thank Mr. Reyes, because without him in shepherding this through the process to make sure we did have this balancing act, so that we didn't harm existing businesses like franchise car dealerships, but we impacted those businesses that are most concerned to us, is exactly what this ordinance does. And I think we do need that one-year review so that we can come back and see exactly what it's doing. In my district, and what we have a number of people complain about, is you drive down the major streets, almost every piece of property that's large enough for a car has an auto-related business. It's either a car wash, a car repair, auto parts. In fact, some of our residential property at one time has been turned into car lots, if it's enough space to park a couple of cars in the front lawn. And so, this is what we're trying to impact, because we believe that the existence of some of this very valuable commercial property can be turned over in time to greater use for the community, rather than what we have as, I think, well before Mr. Reyes got involved with adaptive reuse, people in the community was doing that already. They would turn a house into a car lot, a strip mall into a church. And when you go through some of our poor communities, side by side, many of these kinds of eyesore business exist. And so, we're just pleased that the community that brought my attention to it, the Eighth District, was very, very concerned with it. And we talked to Ms. Perry, and she seconded it. And then to move forward and get the planning commission, the planning department. But it really, the work was done in plumb, and we really appreciate getting that done. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to just draw your attention to item five B, which is being circulated, which is a simple amendment. Mr. Duennas has seen this, Mr. Parks has seen it, Mr. Parks seconded the motion. I think it connects the dots, that all those issues that Mr. Parks brought forward are very true, and this ordinance would do a great deal of cleaning up parts of Los Angeles, particularly South Los Angeles, where this has just proliferated beyond control. And so, I fully support it. The amendment that I'm proposing is just a language change which connects the dots of those criteria Mr. Parks wanted with the ZA and allows the ZA to continue to have more control over all of that long list that Mr. Parks proposed. And so, that is my amendment. I ask your support of amendment five B, and I fully support what Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry are doing. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
I don't want to take much time just to, I hope everyone supports this. It's going to right a lot of past wrongs. People have to live with the smell of paint fumes and dust and absolute disrespect for the quality of the air and their health. And this will, I think, finally level a playing field so that South Los Angeles gets treated the same way other parts of the city would be treated. So, I hope we have a unanimous vote. Bernard.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Are we still circulating that? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that our city attorney sees the language. Again, we've been through a lot of discussion on implementation, and if the city attorney is okay with it, I want to make sure I give her the respect she deserves for all the work we've been doing. Are you okay? Okay. So, in light of our mutual agreement, we're, I just endorse this, these amendments to move forward. So, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. All right.
Thank you. We have Mr. Weisar wishing to speak.
I don't want to rehash anything, but I just simply want to understand one basic thing. For a reuse project, if a person wants to reuse it, what does that person have to do? Abide by these new guidelines? When do they need to go to the ZA?
They abide by the operational guidelines, not the development ones, because we do not intend them to tear down buildings, remove a physical building, just the operational ones. And if they cannot comply with the operational ones, that's typically when they will go to the zoning administrator for a public hearing, where it is vetted out which operational conditions can they comply with, which they can't, or how do they need to be modified to possibly accommodate the business.
Okay. And does your amendment do anything to change the very basic premise?
That amendment basically clarifies that the zoning administrator has the authority to
Gotcha.
Make those changes.
Okay. All right, we have the amendment that's been circulated, it's a friendly amendment. And let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Item thirteen was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item number thirteen.
We can move that on. I got my questions answered.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item thirty-five was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Item thirty-five. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins on item number thirty-five.
Again, my name is Ms. Hawkins. Thank you, Mr. Eric Cassetti. I must say no on housing and apartments, on notices and citations for all tenants and timing of a curfew, late night timing, out or entrance of any building code. No on any arrests by housing authority, police's cars. These new cars are ran by false bishops, council members, and their fake church members. These people can't control any district coming out of churches with their cars made in fake factory buildings in Los Angeles and counties. We must only follow Hawk Eight police's cars only. That will be in completion in a year and a half on March the fifth, two thousand and eight. This style, of this style of churching, controlling, was done by certain bishops named Bishop G. Allison of Church of God in Christ and Bishop Charles Blake.
Excuse me, Mr. President. These are rent escrow account program resolutions.
I called out their names. It is legal. Again, these churches, Church of God in Christ in California, pardon me, Los Angeles, is this style of breaking all surrounding area of people, of five mile radius of each big church. You draw a circle of five mile radius, they have broke the people, took them, which is the brokers. And now, they're looking as though they are poor people. Now, they're saging them in their house with different cars. That is not, if you use a horn on the car, it is not a horn, it is a sirene that is commanding them back in. Now, they became the police, not the Los Angeles police.
Thank you very much, Hawkins. Okay, that closes our public comment on that. Now, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. We are next, item thirty-six. Mr. Parks, I know you wanted to recuse yourself, so we'll take item thirty-six next. And while you're making your way out, I'll call the first public speaker forward, Matt Dowd.
Yeah, I want to say on this item what a great job City Attorney's doing, Dion O'Connell. He's a great-looking guy. He's doing a fantastic job for the city of Los Angeles, and I couldn't read any more.
But if you could just address the item before us. Thank you.
Oh, I can't say what a great job he's doing.
He appears to still be off topic.
Let me say what a terrible job he's doing then, because we get people up here prattle on incessantly with completely vague, incoherent comments, and he never shuts them down.
Sir, if you could just address what was before us and respect the proceedings, we appreciate that. Thank you. That closes public comment on this. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. And we will All right. And we will now go into closed session for the next three items. We've had public hearings on them before in our Budget Committee in accordance with California state law. Going to closed session now to discuss legal matters that are before the council, and we will come back into open session to discuss any actions that we have taken. Thank you. Welcome back into open session. Mr. Clerk, we took votes on a number of closed-session items. Can we put those settlement items before us for a public vote, please?
Yes, Mr. President. On item 37, there's a recommendation for partial settlement in the amount of $650,000 in the case of Tetra, Benue, and Wimmer versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Next one.
On item 38, there's a recommendation for a stipulated award in the amount of $133,285 in the workers' comp case entitled Joseph Langkow versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Colleagues, remember, there were some votes for and some against on this item. Okay. Let's open the roll on this one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
I believe Mr. Zine's vote in closed session was a no vote. And let the record reflect. I know he stepped out to use the restroom for a moment, so probably intended a no vote. Next item.
On item 39, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $217,960.52 in the cases entitled Baltimore Construction Incorporated et al. versus City of Los Angeles.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting or referral.
They're posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Labange?
On behalf of you and all of us this morning, KTLA Los Angeles celebrated their 60th anniversary and got their Hollywood star on the Walk of Fame in front of the Johnny Grand Billy to Mr. Garcetti. I told Hal Fishman, you had to be here at 10:00 a.m., like, he's got to be at the news at 10:00, at 10:00 p.m.
You're the best deputy we got in CD 13.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. You've got a great staff there, Mr. Garcetti.
All right. Yes, Mr. O'Connell.
I would just have to clarify, the closed-session vote on item number 38 was nine to three, with Councilmembers Rosendale, Smith, and Zine voting against, Councilmembers Weezer and Reyes absent. And also, on item number 39, the vote in closed session was 12 to nothing, with Councilmembers Weezer and Reyes absent.
Okay. Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Any other announcements? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? Yes? Ms. Hahn, you have one?
Yes.
Okay. If I could ask everybody to please rise for our adjourning motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we adjourn today in the memory of Amy Weiss-Woolington, who is the daughter of John Woolington and Pam Weiss, and sister of Claire Woolington? She died Saturday in an unfortunate sledding accident in Utah. She was only 21 years old, and she was just about to graduate from UCLA this spring. She was born and raised in Harbor City. She went to the Peninsula Montessori School and Rolling Hills Prep, and she went to Berkeley for two years, and then was transferred to UCLA to complete her undergraduate work, and moved closer to the dance community in Los Angeles that was such a big part of her life. She was looking forward to furthering her dance studies and then eventually going on to law school. So she certainly had her whole life ahead of her. This was really a tragic accident, and we extend our sympathies to her family. The memorial services will be held for Amy this Thursday, January 25th, at 1:00 p.m. at Temple Beth El, 1435 West 7th Street in San Pedro.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other adjourning motions, colleagues?
Congratulations.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We'll next be meeting this Friday at 10:00 a.m., January 26th, here in the City Council chambers of City Hall. And I hope everybody has a great afternoon, a good Thursday, and we'll see you all on Friday. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.